Christine is saying she's in the meeting, but there's no sound.
Oh, yeah, you're unmuted now.
Okay, so Christine, can you just?
I can hear you now.
All right, great. Okay, sorry for the delay. We've had some technical difficulties, but we're all good now. So we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. So it is 4:16 PM on Thursday, May 1st, 2025, and we will convene today's meeting of the Hagatia Restoration and Redevelopment Authority Board of Commissioners. All right, so the first item is we're gonna do a roll call and confirmation of quorum. So we have myself, Maria Leon Guero, the chairperson. Joining us on the phone, we have Commissioner Christine Wolk.
Your question.
And I think we have, from the Commission, we have Dr. Laura Soder joining us today. Who else do we have on the phone?
Vince Ariola from...
From DPO, Public Works?
Yes.
Okay, we have Director Vince Ariola from the Department of Public Works.
Half the day.
Half the day.
That's it.
Hi, half the day. Good afternoon.
Half the day. Okay, and then here with us in the room, we have Commissioner Wes Cassidy. We have Commissioner Dr. Carlos Madrid. And we have Commissioner Mr. Felix Beneventi. And then, of course, we have our Executive Director, Delette Leon Guero. That completes our roll call. And we do have five voting commissioners in the room, myself, Carlos, Wes, Christine. And so that's five. And so that constitutes a quorum for today's meeting. Okay? All righty, the first item is the election of the Treasurer. So we do, we do actually need to elect a treasurer that was previously fulfilled by Elizabeth Gale, who stepped down from the Board of Commissioners. So we need to replace her. Actually, our Vice Chair Patty Ada has agreed to step into that role, but she's unable to fill it officially because we are still pending her confirmation of reappointment. The public hearing was already, already took place, and so now we're just waiting for the senators to do their formal vote. So until such time, she's, she's not officially a board of commissioner. Neinterim, our Secretary Carlos Madrid has, has agreed to accept the role of Treasurer, which will be transitioned to Patty once we get her, she'll be on. So...
Thank you, Carlos.
Well, hopefully that won't be very much longer. So I guess what we need right now is we need a motion to elect Carlos as our interim Treasurer.
As I will.
Great. Can I get a second? Okay, Wes. So all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Christine?
Aye, sorry.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, great. So the motion carries. Thank you, Carlos, for your service. Okay, so next we have the Secretaries' Report. Carlos, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, we have the first item, the approval of the agenda, which is presented, has been presented to us. We have it off and frank. Anybody who would like?
I'll move to agenda. You can second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, agenda's approved.
Then we have the minutes of the meeting, our last meeting on February 6th, that has also been attached. Can we take a minute or less needed to review? And...
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I will.
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. And it's our... So next we have the Treasurer's Report. I think it should be, I know they're all the same color code, but it should be a red pad. At the top of the page there, it should just say HRA Budget Report for January 1st to March 21st, which is the second quarter of the GOGL office year. I guess in the... Did you pick three places?
Yes.
But I have several, because this is my... Do you want to go with the ritulet? It's Carlos. Just... So the... The Personnel Services, salaries and benefits. Our current balance is 2,152,588 for salary. 201,000, yes. 528,888 for salaries and benefits is 96,692,85. Basically, our, our budget is really operational, just salaries. Contractual services for this period, we expended 5,376 of the total for the entire year of 8,381,83. The current remaining balance is 17,007,370. Office space rental, they're still, we don't have a...
They're not billing?
We don't have a lease. I, I'm waiting for a lease. But this is, this is the amount. And that's the amount that we were...
For the whole year?
Yes, yes.
Well, that's...
Yes. It was the same last year.
Just for the space, yes.
So it's like a subsidized rent. Yeah, okay. Supplies and materials for either encumbered or extended, $999.52, which gives a remaining balance of $2,048.
Who's, sorry, for the rent, who's responsible for... Wait, where does that revenue go to? Like, who's supposed to bill it?
Department of Administration, TOA.
Oh, okay. So they own the building?
They own the building.
At some point, they'll probably W. Right?
I do. We, we do a JV, too.
Okay, okay. This, this... Power, water, telephone.
Power, water, telephone, yeah, it's all... How come there's no billing for that? I'm sure that we're being billed. How come we're not? Why is it showing like we're not, there's no balance?
They normally give us an invoice, but we're still waiting for them to provide us the lease agreement and...
Oh, all that is through the lease agreement?
Yeah, it's included in the, the lease.
Oh, okay.
Power, water. Telephone is with Public Health, the building. So we do JV as well, too, then. Normally, we do it at the end of the fiscal year.
I see. Okay, moving on to our grants, the Hagatia Rivers Study, the DOI grant, and that, we still have... The 975 actually has been, I guess you could say, encumbered because, but we're waiting, haven't expended anything because of the pause and then reinstatement. And so now there's a new commander, so we're waiting to, waiting for them to get back to us. So we see...
But they confirmed this money is...
This, oh, yes, 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 this is now available. The other balance of the DOI grant for the hybrid automobile, which is now on island, we should get soon, has been... 52,990. There's a, an amount for the insurance.
Oh, that's the balance.
Yeah. And then we have the DOI, the Matrix Planning Grant. So that was a 240,000, and basically this period is in encumbered. We, we have an invoice, I think we have two invoices from them, but we, they haven't... That's why. And actually, we just got them this month, not last month, this goes to May, to March. So that's still there. And then the legal services, this was a balance, the other balance that we are gonna talk about today is the MOA with the KINA. And that amount has been set aside for the legal services.
And we haven't received any buildings, kind of?
No, no, we just started, yeah. So she said that she'll give us one in May.
Okay. So then for the new grants that we just got, like the HLD one, that will be added to this spreadsheet or something?
Yes, yeah, it'll be, it'll be separate.
Okay.
And because we didn't get it till... Okay. So that's the Treasurer's Report. Any questions? Okay, all right, so can I get a motion to approve the treasurer?
Make a motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
I can.
Next, all in favor? Aye. Okay, any opposed? All right, Treasurer's Report gets approved. So next, we'll make Executive Director's Report. Okay, I actually gave you a copy as my recording there, your binders. I always read my reports since you have them. I just, I just wanted to mention that this past quarter, HRA, like many other organizations, experienced a sort of a motion sickness. Is what I'm calling it. And not from internal instability, but from the ever-shifting landscape of, actually, the nation's public programs and services. It's been, you know, it's been kind of stressful. But in, in response, we've tried to remain flexible, focusing on what we can control and sort of, you know, thinking outside the box, I guess you might say. And building support networks and trying to prioritize well-being. So... Just wanted to start with that. So now we'll go into our key accomplishments for this period. Community engagement, which would be the launch of our Hagatia, yeah, I included that in, in your binders also, the United for our Hagatia is what we call it, but... The group itself calls itself the Roundtable. But so it's, right now, it's about 10 organizations, but there's a lot more that we want to do. And it's, it's really just coming together, I, yeah, said to come together to sort of like help me focus on Hagatia. You know, with all of the different expertise and networks that people have. So our first, we had the first meeting where they all agreed to this, and their second meeting, we had, we met, actually had to deal with the Humanities WAM, which is being defunded. So it was like, right away, we had to, you know, think it's probably better, try and figure out what we could do for that organization. So I think it's, it's just in the infancy stage. The next meeting will be at which... So then we also, along with this, we, our internship program, which is building capacity and preserving heritage, which is partnership with the University of Guam. We have two business majors that, I mean, David Ferrara and Gerardo Cerro, who have been working on the database for the... Pre-war, over two residents of Hagatia. So they, they've already, I think they're almost finished with San Ignacio, so that would be four barrios that we have linked the names to the lots on the map.
So that's Aniba, Lulali, Santa Cruz, and San Ignacio.
Yeah, so all of those, yeah. And so we, I need more interns. And we also have, are working at, which is included here, is a, an MOA with Mark, with the Micronesia Research Center, because of the grant that we got from the first...
Federal handling.
Yes, so we're using that for, for part, partiments for the interns to be able, because this, it's, it's a big job. Yeah, you know, it's a big job, so we need more interns. So we're, we're going to hopefully partner with Mark, and they will match dollar for dollar so that it expands the amount that we have.
For your research assistance.
Yeah, so... Yeah, so we have, yeah, we're going to have interns at Mark that are doing that, and then and then there's the also the research assistant intern that will be working with me at the. Office, yeah, and she'll, I mean, she'll be working. There's a lot to do, you know, and there's people, families that want us to go out and look at their. Their photos and their things, so I'm hoping that she's going to be able to. To gather some of that, because they will have the Mark gathering and then we'll know from the actual families that have things that probably Mark doesn't have. So I'm excited about that.
Yeah, hopefully, I mean, if I may, the 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 mall is in the process of review for legal by the legal department. And there is that Mark can contribute in time, equal amount of maybe, there may be the 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 cost of the interns and maybe associated costs. Like some reproduction expenses or something like that, or running costs or something like that, but that's subject for the. But yeah, we're happy, I mean, our market representative is not here. I can trust me, Mark is happy to continue the way we see this, uh, continued support to the mission of H R A.
Okay, the next one is funding and grants. So we have the D O, the D O I grant, the matrix contract that we have, and so what they're doing, what they're working on now is. The community focused marketing campaign to. Raise awareness, so I just met with them, so hopefully, we're going to be getting something soon. In your packets, I gave you a copy of. The logo that they did for the our about you website, the website, the website for the project. Ourfagatia dot com, so this is just a wide wide. With these members of the central. Website itself is. Is ongoing, I've gone back and forth with them because it's not exactly what I what I envisioned and what's a little bit for, so we're working on that. They're also working on a community engagement program, which involves. Surveys, residential household surveys, small business surveys, and directed focus groups, so we're going to have. I think one large event where I'm hoping to have like tables of ten, ten tables of ten for different people, so that there might be like. Business people, historians, educators, you know, residents, you know, so that would be. One, and then we'll have a couple more. Sort of directed hoops, so that we sort of reach a wide. A wide variety of. For that. Yeah, and then they have the the account with the implementation of the Gania Bara, that's all of that working, that are planning and design. So so when we gather all this information, we're hopefully going to be able to find what what those needs assessments from the. Residents and the businesses, everybody that's stakeholders. And they'll be coming up with a plan. Based on that.
And then is the is the input that you're seeking, is it for the Barrio project specifically, or is it for? More in the context of. I've gotten you. Oh, in a general sense?
It's it's it's, I guess, what I could say is both, because you want, what what I, what the Barrio project is, we're trying to. If we're gathering this information by Mario, we're hoping that what's going to happen is. Each Barrio might, you know. Their character might be revealed. If you look at the history of that place and who lived there and. If it if it can come up with a certain character, right, so then that can be. I mean, I'm hoping this was gonna be, I don't know. But so then, if each Barrio had a different character, then that can be built upon, right? So so in the end, it helps the entire. So it's so it's both, because we're going to talk about infrastructure, we talk about, you know, lighting and.
I think transportation.
The the draft survey was. Oh, yes, it's in the back here.
I from the business.
Yeah, I I did, I gave, I included the the business community survey, I I had, did you guys have a chance to look at it? It's in it's back, it's in the packets, it's in the packets, I guess, right behind the executive director's report, so there is, so if you have time. You know, take a look at it, let me know what you think, because this is draft. So if you have some questions or some things that you might want to include, let me know. But this is a draft, so we're going to have something similar to this for the residents. And then we're also working on trying to get a housing assessment, which is a separate thing, which. Uh, we're we're trying to apply for a Gura community block grant for that. As to do the housing assessment. That one. Okay, yes. The block grant. We need some some of the policies in the back for signature, we need that, we need that in support of this grant. You know, there's some requirements that we have to have. Shows that we actually have. You know. The signatories have to have. The authority to sign, to sign on the after, yes, yes, so we know that, and then we also will need letters of support that we're hoping. To get. I don't know if the. Patty was saying that we could get them from the board of directors, but I just seems kind of insatiable. But we'll see.
That's good.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so then we have the the distressed cities technical assistance that we were so excited about, and then it completely got canceled. Uh, you know, and I was really depressed about it, so we I I had had a meeting with the governor and she was like, okay. No, just go ahead and. Find out how much it costs and then bring, you know, bring them up, and then. When I said, okay, they they can come, I I was thinking we were going to have some. Extra funds, she says, okay, you can use the the money that you don't that for the P C one position that we haven't filled.
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's all right, so that's what we we've done is the 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 amount of money. We're using that.
Probably pass one on.
Yeah, it's it's okay, but it's okay, it's it's true, because we, even if we hire that person and we are.
Well, you're not going to spend the entire amount for this, is what you're.
No, we're not, so then we're so we're using that to bring. L I S C is the name of the the group is. Oh, gosh. It sounds for something, don't worry, yes, yeah, keep going, okay, all right. So they so they so they're going to to come out, and so we're working with them, but then what happened, just on Saturday. I got an email from HUD saying that they've actually reinstated that program, and it was completely canceled, so this is what I'm talking about, motion sickness. And so. That's good, because we're 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 still moving forward, and so they're going to come out and do an assessment, you know, the initial visit, and then. We have them for, I think it's like twelve.
So do we still have to pay that twenty five thousand for them or not?
Yes, yes, we do, we were, I mean.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they pay, but they.
Otherwise it might.
But they pay any cost above that, right?
Yes, they they pay any cost above that, yeah, yeah, and it's actually good because it's getting the the program going, otherwise, you know how long it takes. It would, so we can get this.
L I S C stands for Local Initiative Support Corporation.
And they're a national. Nonprofit that. Helps. Community development, our community development, yeah, and and she's already told me, for instance. What do you think, AmeriCorps, I was trying to get AmeriCorps, I guess. I don't have enough staff, so I was trying to get AmeriCorps volunteers, and I went and spoke with them and thought it was good, and then they, in the end, they told me that all of their. Volunteers were were spoken for. And so she said, oh, that's okay, I'll contact a person over here, and we'll get somebody, and we'll send them a message in Guam that. They need to, you know, to assign someone to us, so so I'm excited about that, because. That will be. Uh, then we have our new vehicle acquisition, the Honda C R V Hybrid, and and then there are other, I just wanted to mention some of the other grants that we that we had been working on, but then things keep getting pulled. So we were working on sort of the trolley and the heritage trail, we were looking at the brick. And and that thing got moved. Just recently, it's like completely shut down, so. So, you know, we've been working on things that. End up just.
That's a federal thing?
Yes, federal, yes.
What's expected for the community survey to come up?
The community survey? Let me check, I have a.
But just just.
Well, I was hoping as soon as possible to be.
Do you think we might be, we could talk about adding a question or? That kind of deals with encouraging. Restaurants and taverns or food alternatives and again.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we, that's what I said, if you have, if you want to add some questions to that. Give it to me, yeah, yeah, so we're still in the best draft.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, and they still haven't done the, I I gave them back the residential survey for them to.
So that one is just for the, that's directed to the business.
That's on it, right.
And then there's a separate one.
There's a separate one for residential. Because we need to find out what pockets in Gania are qualified for specific grants, so. We need some household information to know whether or not they're low to median income, because the whole village is not, so. But if we can identify pockets in the village, then we'll know that we can apply for a grant for that.
But can we just, can we just use the census information?
No. I know, is that, no, no, you need to go even first, we need to go door to door. No, the census information.
I mean, isn't that the most comprehensive kind of like survey that's done for our population?
Yes, but that's like. No, I think it's it's different, yeah.
It's like a bigger picture.
Yeah.
And to look at pockets, so it's supposed to be.
Yeah.
Like metropolitan district or something like that, that's not a fun tool. They're not in little.
They're not.
Pockets.
It's like. Oh, but they have, I don't even know if they would have like Eva, you know. They might just have forgotten, and then they have all of them.
Oh, I see, you know, you see what I'm saying, you mean, they don't, they don't make a distinction.
No.
Outside of just a village, maybe?
It's just a village of Gania.
Yes, village of Gania, and and so you need to have surveys. I I mean.
Targeted to. Our permanent residents of Gania or?
Just, this one, it.
No, no.
The the survey?
Yeah.
It's everybody, everybody, residents, yes, residents, if they're living in an apartment. I know, the mayor's not here, I don't know. But, yeah. We got the. But it's not just, not just the landowners, we're not just the.
Let's let's keep moving.
I know, it's a lot, it's a lot of stuff, I'm sorry. Infrastructure and policy updates, okay. Oh, wait, I missed the the M O A with K I N A. Yes, that's. So that's that's those ones that we agreed to with K I N A, and we actually give the M O. The M O A. That will have to be approved by the board, at least it was signed already, and we've already started work on it, but.
It's just for legal services, it's what we have been talking about, so basically, we're picking up, piggybacking off of K I N A's. Existing contract for legal services, and they're just turning around and. And filling us at whenever they're consistent.
So that's good for us, because we've had a hard time finding anyone to do before us, because we really. Okay, and the Palacio reconstruction, so I just, you know, everyone's been telling me, you know, that the hot barn is. Is being looked at to for that particular project, but I don't know how. No, I haven't. I don't have any people, yeah, but many several people have talked to me about it, you know.
So anything from the legislature, from the government, from the government?
Uh, both. Yes, both, both.
And what specifically the legislature, I think the Palacio is in the area under legislative control.
Yes. So who would who would the, who would decide what projects get funded by the hot barn? You guys know?
G V B, G V B, G V B, so.
Yeah, okay, so so there are no K I N A's involved and. I mean, it's.
Yeah.
And I'll find out, I'm just curious who, yeah.
The 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 previous statement was that the. Governor Cabo have left. Instruction or some kind of directional to allocating those funds to for the reconstruction of.
Yeah, but I think it's a movie, I I I don't.
Political system.
Yeah, we'll we'll find out, I think they, I think that between G V B and K I N A, they'll probably prioritize what will have the biggest impact. For our tourism. Industry.
So moving on to the next one, which is sort of in conjunction with that, when I met with the governor, she asked me if I could speak with. The vice speaker in charge of that about the. Transfer from the that land to the.
The Plaza Hispania?
Yes, and.
The it's called the historic district.
The historic district, and. Uh, I did meet with the vice speaker, and he had very positive feedback, he actually said, what if you're going, you don't want to be in.
I think.
Landlord business, and so he told me that he would invite me to enjoy, invite H R A to a meeting with their attorneys when they start to talk about, so that is.
Okay, that makes sense, that was hiring people to mow the grass.
Yes, exactly, that's what I, yeah, yeah, but we should be able to, okay, so then, we're moving, I mean, I think we're moving somewhere. We're making progress. So the master plan is with the governor's office, and and they're preparing a bill for the resubmission to the legislature. And the tax revenue. Our arrangement, and there's reached an agreement with the Department of Revenue and Taxation to clarify and secure. Our share of the tax revenue, and we're just waiting for the formal correspondence. From. D R T to to D O A. To tell them what the amount of the funds are and. To establish the account. So fingers crossed. We had a, we had a good meeting with Murray Basama, Director of Revenue Tax, and. Basically, they, back in twenty twenty one, when it was Director of that beach in Bazu, they provided the table that showed us. The amount of. Of, I guess, you know. Actually, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, amount of revenue from the.
The property.
The property taxes, but the the improvements, right?
On everything.
Based on our, based on the law, right, our founding law that we were due. And so. We were just trying to figure out, okay, what's the next step, how do we kind of get things moving? And so we thought a formal letter from the Director of Revenue Tax to the Director of Administration. With the supporting data to show them this is, you know, in compliance with the law, this is what our research and our data shows. So we recommend that you establish the account, so we'll just go from there, yeah. We'll see, we'll see, we'll put that out and see, you know, what the response is, and we'll just try to keep working that. Or figure out how to get that established. Uh, and then the Gania River channelization, I already talked about that, it's, we're just waiting. Oh, and a request from the Board of Commissioners from the last meeting, the design guidelines, I did send them to the Land Use Commission. With the requests that they portrayed it, I haven't. I haven't got a response yet.
The whole design guideline, I I knew that was in the.
Yes. Uh, and then the other makes sense with the public private partnership policy, I asked a, I asked specifically from K I N A, because I thought they would be the one that would have that, and they. They said, no, so what I did is I did a A I, and I looked for best practice policies in public private partnership, so I included that. And it is the key elements of this practice, so it's the beginning of a policy that. To develop. I haven't come yet. The ongoing challenges are, as always, staffing, you know, the amount of of work and the things that we're doing. I'm trying my best to to find people to fill these gaps, interns, you know. Pretty soon volunteers. And then the master plan, okay, that's always way. Legislative recruitment, and then, of course, the tax, which is, you know, everything is moving forward, I feel good about it.
Right, I have a question, did you, didn't we mention that a round of visits to the senators of the legislature to to encourage them to?
I think to resocialize.
Yes.
Right.
But the the three documents that we originally submitted, the package that we originally submitted. Because what we were proposing is submitting, resubmitting with no. No changes.
Hmm.
But, uh, there are still new, new senators, uh, that were not part of the initial group.
Hmm.
And I think it would, I think it would just benefit us overall to just sit down and resocialize it. With, with each of them, uh, possibly do another presentation, just to kind of refamiliarize them with all the. The three components, which are the master plan, the design guidelines, and the map of us. Before it comes to a vote, so we're not just like. You know, just submitting it without any interaction or any outreach, and I don't think that would be successful.
I see, okay. If you can, so that I can make myself available to do a, to be part of the presentation in some kind of historical, these was, digital recreation. To make it more appealing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So that's it, from there, okay, all right, that was the executive director's report, so, full, full business, board renewals and appointments, so I think we have a. We have a table showing the status of that, um, uh. Yeah, I think we mentioned it previously, but, um, we're waiting on Patty and. Or Patty to be officially reconfirmed, also Felix, but Felix, technically, your term is still, you're still within your term, you're just ahead of the game. In, in your renewal process, so that's, that's good.
And Christine was confirmed already, uh, in the interim between our last meeting and this one. So we still have two vacancies, I think the governor has some ideas about who those could be, uh, we did talk about. The need, or how it would be very valuable to have a commissioner with a legal background. Uh, still think that, that would be great, so maybe we can, um, talk to the governor and see if she has. If, um, that could be considered. Uh, but we'll report to the board as soon as we. Candidates, and if I find them to.
Okay, um, committee assignments, so last time we did mention about, um, you know. Establishing some kind of committees, not, not to say that we need to have standing meetings off the bat, uh, but I think, uh, Gillette just. Wanted to gauge interest on who would be able to serve on each of these committees, and just to recap. What's up, am I, okay, is it here?
Yeah.
Let me see, that's before the articles, right, yeah, okay, so, okay, so executive committee, we all know what that is, the, uh, so the other committees being proposed are policy slash legal. As one, finance, finance and audit as one. Programs and projects as one, and outreach slash community relations as, as one. So at this point in time, now, we're doing a lot of like foundational policy work, I mean, it would, it would have been nice to have, it's still nice to have. Good to have a policy committee and meet at half and just take a look at these things, be, uh, before we bring them to the board. Um, in the absence of that, it's really just in between Gillette and I, to kind of look at it by the attorney, so.
And the attorney, yes, true, so.
Uh, but with the Bardos project, and it's taking shape, maybe a programs, a projects committee would be good to have. Uh, so again, it's just to kind of put, put that out there, and, uh, and for you guys to just communicate back which of these committees. You would be willing to serve on, right? Yeah, as a committee, so can I just say that the committees can also include other people outside the board?
Yes.
Because, um.
We can pull other people into it.
What, I, I see it more as like a resource for myself, to be able to go to, you know, ask advice, you know. People with specific expertise that will. Be just be good.
It, it, it would be a good way too, to sort of pull potential commissioners into the or, into our orbit, just to see if. You know, to give them exposure to our organization, what we're all about, and maybe at some point, it could be like a, a pool for future commissioners.
Build into capacity, yeah.
So, just for that there, on the committees, um, property tax and revenue fund, we, we actually already discussed that during your executive director's report. And then the master plan, uh, we did discuss that as well, but I think last time, or, uh, the, the email was shared with the official physician. Uh, from the legislature that is, um, that our master plan didn't get passed, and just to boil it down to its essence. The law says that, uh, in order to lapse into law, it has to be forty five days plus two legislative days. And apparently, when they dug into the details, the forty five days had passed, but it was only one legislative day, not two, because. They, they sort of recessed the session, so it was like a continuation of one session and not two legislative days, and so. Uh, and then the legislative, uh, term ended before the second day, um, so. So basi, so basically, the recommendation is that we have to basically start the journey all over again, which is what we're doing, unfortunately.
Okay, so that's, that's that one, um, new business, okay, we have a bunch here, so I, I, I have, I hope you guys had a chance to. Read all of that, but I'm gonna try to get us through this, so the first one is the Articles of Incorporation. Now, this was reviewed by the Kida's legal counsel as well, um. I think it's fairly straightforward, the articles, it, it names, it, uh, lists the powers that we were given within that, within the founding law itself. Um, and it just is, is very, there's nothing really new here, it's all pretty boilerplate. Um. So does anyone have any questions or issues with the articles?
No.
Thanks.
You gotta point at them.
Yeah. Yes, I think I didn't because of, okay.
So, so, articles, reported articles in the back.
No, I don't think so, yeah, we had our, no. Yeah.
So that's it, so let me just get through, we can mo, we can motion them all at the end, okay, so next, the bylaws. So the bylaw, a little more detailed, um, I did make some brief notes, Gillette, on the bylaws, I hope. So for, for section two, principal office, we need to provide a specific physical address, because usually that, that is always provided. Whatever our, what the physical ad, address of your office.
Something.
Because all it says is that it changes.
It can change, change. I know. But.
I don't know, I've, I've always, I've al, I've always seen it that we have to provide our place of business in the, in the.
Should we catch that?
Okay, but that's.
Yeah.
Otherwise, like, otherwise we can say, oh, we're in the United States.
Yeah, yeah, he, he needs to go to the government.
Right, so, yeah, okay, and, the address.
You see, checks.
Um, aside from that, I. I did, oh, okay, um. I just made some side notes of things that we need to do, not really any, not really any, uh, comments to, um. Revise, but just more notes to myself, uh, for example, um. The board will evaluate the performance of the executive director. Um, and then reporting, we are responsible for reporting our activities and progress to the governor and one legislature as required by law, so I just made a note there to. Make sure we, we kind of calendar, review of your things. Um, and it's timely, right, because we're gonna reintroduce the master plan, so.
But I see, I always.
Yeah. Yes, so between, I think between you and the governor, that's not an issue, because you have, you already have your established life combination. But maybe with the legislature.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and I, yeah, that, so, I did not have any other questions or issues, did we, did any of us have?
I, I did notice, um. In the latter part of the bylaws, there is the use of the term corporation, um, I'd show it in. Authority, and I think corporation probably meant facility. But.
Oh, okay, so I need to think.
Article seven.
Yes. Okay, I'll change that. So I, there is also an extensive, uh, section regarding executive sessions, I guess that means like, um. Closed and, and non-public, so I'm assuming that everything that's stated there is in alignment with. Laws and that's not something you can change, okay?
The executive session.
Let's now.
And sometimes it's, and nobody's allowed in the room, sometimes it's, the public is there, but it's like an invisible. Wall that they cannot participate.
Yeah.
It's, it can be like that.
Oh, I don't know, I, I've always stopped at the, they have the week.
Yeah, okay.
It's, in my experience, and I look into it.
Yeah.
Usually, um. When they go into executive sessions. It's.
Minor recommendation to make, but nothing. There's no, there's competition, comment.
Okay. Yeah, so I guess, from what's stated here, the only kind of word, we're allowed to have a closed session is if. There is like, an ongoing litigation or a threat of litigation, and then we have to sort of. Use that return to client privilege, just, but aside from that, that's it.
Oh, there's a difference between closed session and.
Yeah.
They can call it. Executive session.
Setting.
Okay, so I'm, but I'm assuming all of this is in line with some of the, we have to.
Yes.
Yes, so in that case, everyone, you know, in and arguing with reality, I just, I just wanted to make sure of that. Okay, so we will obviously comply with the laws. Yeah, I already mentioned here. Um, there is something I do have a question on, or I have a couple, so on page twelve, it says, under section seven, secretary, uh, part B, it says. De custodian of the records and seal. Uh, it says de custodian of the records and a seal of appropriation, do we even have a seal?
No, because we, we just have the bylaws.
Yeah, but do we, do we need a seal, is that like, that sounds like an antiscontist thing, I mean.
Yeah.
I don't know, there is.
Oh, G J.
Okay, well.
What, what is the state of them?
It's a, yeah, yeah, no, it's a stamp, yeah, I mean, I know that I have one from, do you have one?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yes, yes, so do I, even for my little volunteer, I never see it, okay, okay, so that's something, if that's a thing, then okay, I just have never heard of that. It sounds so like, I have one.
Okay, and then the, and then the next question I have is on page fourteen, letter H, prepare an annual audit report, we.
We don't.
Or that's to be. Yeah, an annual audit report. Yeah, so we are not, we don't have our, we don't maintain our own books at the time, yes, yes, so maybe this is sort of like, uh, we can sort of say.
Yeah.
This is in anticipation of, maybe there's, being an autonomous entity that manages its own books, right? I just wanted to point out, there's nothing to audit right now.
Right, no, there's nothing.
Yeah. Or like, you know, everything.
Well, we need to prepare something that says, there's nothing audit, but, you know, I'm saying something, but there's nothing inside.
Yeah.
Yeah, something is required.
Yeah.
So, so B J can say, I didn't receive that, you know.
Yes, okay.
We don't want to be on that checklist that says more response.
Yeah, yeah. Yes.
Just wanted to put that up there. Okay, um. Okay, and then, uh, on page. Sixteen. On page sixteen, it says for books and records, says the authority shall keep correct and complete books and records of account. This is kind of just the same thing, just, just that we are not, we are not really keeping books for ourselves at this point, so, just as long as that's understood. And we make, but we do, when, when we.
The account that we're opening with, yes, yes, we'll have to.
And if, and if we have separate, separate rent monies, then we have to start keeping.
Yes, so that's why I need to, I need to.
Yeah, okay, so, yes, and are we going to, are we going to do a full-blown audit every year? That, once we start, because, because that money is not a large sum of them, yeah, so.
We don't have money for that.
Yeah, so that would affect. So, so, but here we're kind of committing ourselves, doing an annual audit, and, and even though we, you know, we don't really have a lot of money outside of. You know, our government money.
That's big.
So it may be kind of, I'm just thinking, annual audit might be, um, a heavy burden for such a small amount of money. It's something to consider, maybe a review, maybe a third grant review.
But I think, what, what we, yeah, what we do now is when they ask for an audit, because to get these grants, we need to be audited.
Yeah, but we just say, so give them the good form.
And so, yeah, that's what I'm saying, you give them the good form.
Yeah, but here we're actually sort of implying that we're gonna do our own independent audit, which I don't think we're there yet. Um, and even with this, I, I feel like a full-blown audit is a heavy scope, but maybe it could be a, a lighter.
Yeah.
Yeah, like a lighter scope, yeah. So maybe.
Yeah, audit lighter.
Maybe we need to reword it.
Yeah, may, maybe we can, maybe we can just say, um. I don't know what we say, but I think.
I think the reason why it's here is also because we're trying to make sure that all of our, our. Best practice, because if we're going to be applying for funds, you know, we need to show that we're. So, let me, let me talk to them. But also try to grab how to say that.
Yeah.
But, or, or put in a clause that maybe, maybe we can have like a certain amount of money. I mean, if.
If our, yeah, I think, I think, I think we just research what the best practice is for nonprofit organizing, and at what point do they need to have a fair.
Full-blown audit.
Um.
Yeah.
It's only overseen by V M R, so.
Yes, uh, yeah.
Don't they have like. Audit kind of reviews?
Uh, ready?
I'm sorry.
Maybe a more, it's, you're asking.
Don't make like, talk our money, and tell us what's available also, and what's, what we can use.
That's under number one, so, so D O A doesn't audit for all government, including us, and we're covered under that, yeah, so we don't have a. We're just under a general government one on it, but if we start getting all these big grants and all this money that's outside of. You know, our budget funding, the general fund, then we would now take responsibility for.
Yeah.
Managing those things, and audit and auditing that, all of that, account.
I'm thinking of, yeah, the auditor, I want, I mean, I mean, H R A to be, did not respond, did not respond, incomplete. There's got to be some kind of, something to submit, that conveys with some of their audit departments, even though it's not full, uh, full on audit.
Yeah.
But some kind of response to the awful one.
But I did, I did, one of the first people I went to see was an extra ass, I think there was an audit of H R A. We're too small for, it's the, um, the amount of.
Sure, will we classify it as the not respond?
No, that, no.
Just no other.
No, 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 it's because we, we don't have, you know, the, the amount of money that the authority gets is so little that it's not. Worth auditing, I guess, I don't know. It's never, as far as I can see, it has never been on to, I, I mean, I tried to find the.
Well, D O A manages all of our accounts with our general fund money, so we have to go through them for everything. Uh, so, so basically, their audit is our, it covers us, we just fall under their. Okay, so I guess articles and bylaws, um.
I have a comment to.
Yes.
To make a suggestion, and, and maybe a motion, um, but submitting to, for the discussion of a, of an order, of merely symbolic purposes. The articles of incorporation, of incorporation, and the bylaws are like core documents for, for each area, and I'm, I celebrate that they're. That they're in place, uh, of their, of, the way they're being placed. But the, the, the symbolic suggestion that I'm, the symbolic step that I'm suggesting we, we incorporate is, could we. Yeah, have them translated into Chamorro and in Spanish, showing that that is, that those are core. Showing that that is, that those are core languages of Hagania. And it shows our engagement with the indigenous language of Guam. And at the same time with the language of. Of Hagania before. Uh, and just. Have them for symbolic, symbolic purposes in those languages. Note, we're starting that the, the, the ruling version will have to be the one in English, of course. And that this translation is conducted, uh, at no cost and at no order. For HR, which I think I can, I can assert. So I make a motion that we have the articles of incorporation of HR. Um, translated into Chamorro and in Spanish and be part of the official documents of the charity.
Let, let's check that first.
I mean, yeah, group version, very good version is there. But.
But official language is.
So, so.
It's more in Spanish.
Would you all feel comfortable with approving it, or would you, do you? At least the articles, I think there's no issues there. The, the bylaws, and we need this program application? Uh, yeah, it's, it's, okay, so then, so then the only, I think the only, the only thing that. I feel we need to do is put the, the address and then just get more clarity on the audit order. Um, but maybe we can approve it as is, and then. And then, and then when we get more clarification on the audit, then we can revise that language.
Sure.
You guys agree with that?
I agree.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve articles and bylaws with, uh, subject to the correction be discussed?
I still. I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Great, uh, motion carries, yay, we have articles and bylaws. Okay, uh, a few more policies are.
All the motions.
Oh, then his.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, and then Carlos's motion. So Carlos made a motion to have these foundational documents translated into. Tomorrow and Spanish. Okay, um.
I move.
So your second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, any opposed? Okay, great, motion carries. Okay, so next we have. Signing authority, isn't it? Okay, sorry, it should be right back. So, okay, okay, so this is just the policy for the signing authority. I had a couple of, of suggestions here. So it shows the effective date, and then I, I'm recommending to put the last review date.
Okay.
Because I think, I, I want to say that last meeting, there was a recommendation that all policies should be reviewed on a manual basis.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay. So we can just at least track the last, the date of last review. And we can do it all at once, rather than. And several.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, the next thing here in the policy statement says all H R A bank accounts shall be maintained with recognized financial institutions. I just underlined recognize, maybe we want to be more specific, does that mean? License to do business in Guam, does that mean FDIC insured, what does that mean? I see to, to, um. Does mean, I mean, FDIC would just mean that if our deposits would be in trade up to two hundred fifty thousand. Per depositor. Um. But I don't know, I just, I just. Yeah, I mean. I would say FDIC insured, the only exception to that is if we ever get to the point where we're having like significant savings and we want to put in. In maybe like a. I don't know, like a money market or something like that, that may not be FDIC insured, but still. Maybe see FDIC insured financial institutions, um, any exceptions would be, would be approved by the board. Something like that. I think that's pretty. Pretty safe, FDIC insured financial institution. Say that. And to say that, any exceptions would, would need to be approved by the board. Okay. Um, and then the next, uh, or a couple of bullets says, no single individual may unilaterally occupy this business. I think the threshold is later defined. I, I underlined threshold, but I think it's defined later in the operating source. Okay. The other thing was designation of signing officers, I mentioned in a one-to-one header. We don't have a CFO currently, but we may at some point in the future, but I would, I would recommend. Maybe we should strike this, and we add. Sure. And if we get one, we can add them, okay, yeah, yeah. Um, okay, so the threshold is a thousand, so I guess anything under a thousand. Would, would, would be able to be signed by any two. Okay, what's the difference then?
The difference is, um, executive.
Okay.
Chair, vice chair, treasurer.
Okay, but if you had a CFO, then the two of you could sign anything under a thousand.
Right.
Ah, gotcha, okay, so that's. Okay. That makes sense, just for operational.
Yeah.
Uh, is right. Okay, um. Okay, so I, on the bank notification, so it says that BD is responsible for notifying the bank of offers, signatories and providing specific signatures that will be fine. Along with certified copies of board resolution. So my question is. Uh, when we, when we approve signatories, we're going to have to do a resolution for that? Or can, or when minutes, would minutes be acceptable?
I think usually minutes are, I mean, I actually have never. I mean, all the places I've.
I think from the bank, from the bank's perspective, they usually accept either. But I just wanted to say this. Maybe copies of board resolution or minutes, you can have flexible.
Yeah.
Okay. Um. And then review and oversight, it says the board of commissioners will review this policy every two years. I, I was just, I was thinking maybe this could be consistent with what was stated, yes, every year, all policies will be reviewed. Hopefully, we won't have. As many of them. Okay. Okay, so that's that one, um. Any questions on this one? I think it's pretty. Straightforward. Okay, if no questions, can I get a motion for the. Signing authority? Policy?
I feel like I made a motion because I would be here.
Well, all, all the executive committee.
I'll be, I'll make a motion.
Okay. Can I, can I get a second?
All right, Wes.
Okay, so Wes, Wes, the second now too, okay, all in favor?
You got, you got a check in Christine.
Aye.
Yeah, okay, so motion carries. Come on, guys, you gotta keep this moving. Okay, next is the authority guidelines for raising funds, and this is really. Directed towards the grants and the donations. Um, in our founding legislation, or legislation, it also, uh, gives us the right to borrow and issue bonds, which is another form of debt. But this does not address that, and that's probably a good issue, maybe that should be a separate policy. But essentially, this gives Gillette authority to apply for grants on our behalf. And, and, and establish fundraising programs on our behalf. Um. And it basically just states that, you know, everything that we do, applying for grants and fundraising needs to be aligned with our mission. We will not accept donations or grants from. Organizations that, you know, we feel are in conflict with our mission or that are not. Lawful.
Shady.
And are shady, so just sort of those kind of like ethics, basic ethics things. Um. Yeah. Are there any questions or concerns?
I, I do have a question, um. There are some organizations that, government organizations that don't accept. Any money from nonprofits. Because nonprofits are advocacy groups. And. That, you know, they, they could go from one extreme to the other.
Hmm.
Um. I guess the same thing can be said about private. Donations, private grants, right?
Yeah.
But most private grants are. Usually. Wrapped around nonprofits. Um. I, I, I bring this up, I remember when I was at Public Works, there was, there's a law that allows for advertising on school buses.
Uh.
And the federal. Um. Highway, or some federal organization said. There was going to be a. A, uh. Uh, an advertiser, dubbed a nonprofit. Boy Scouts. Uh, nonprofit bank.
Yes.
I said, you can't, you can't do that, you know.
I'm sorry, can anybody hear me? I can't hear you.
Christine, I think, this is Laura, I think they've, uh. Dropped off the radar.